And she will be here very shortly, but I think we'll go ahead and start our Board of Education meeting. Welcome. I know we have some, I'm gonna not name this correctly, but since we're starting without our normal 5 o'clock, this is actually our board meeting, so we'd like to recognize a few people here. We'll start with our, tell me who's here. Thank you. We'll start, is anyone here from GEA? Thank you. PTA?
I'm Liz Shell, I'm the Regional High Chair.
Great.
I'm Ingrid Moore, what were your council members like? Right now.
Okay, and then I think we have another association here.
I'm Reezy, I'm the President of the Granite Education Support Professionals Association.
Yes, thank you. And, okay, and then we'll go with the, who's here on the board? We'll start with Clark.
Clark Nelson.
Karen Wender.
Connie Burgess.
Kim Chandler.
Julie Jackson.
Todd Hopper.
Ben Orsley.
And I'm Chris Nguyen, Board Vice President. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Tyler Howell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, we will forego our reverence for now, and we will go to our Good News Minute. We will start with Clark, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just mention two quick things, if I may. First, had a great meet the new administration event, a new principal at Cottonwood High School this fall, and they hosted a great event where Justin Pitcher and Michelle Farmer in particular were there to introduce themselves and great conversations with parents and students alike all throughout the evening. So grateful to them for their willingness to do that and then allow the patrons and students to come and meet them and get to know them. And if you'll allow me a personal privilege, how can I say this the best and most appropriate way? Following in a long line of teachers, my own personal daughter is starting her first second grade class as a teacher this fall, well tomorrow, so tomorrow. So congratulations to her, and I could not be more proud of her, so thank you for that opportunity.
Okay, Karen.
I wanted to speak on two things real quick. The first thing, thank you for the positive emails we've gotten from a handful of teachers. It is totally within the Board's purview to step up and do above and beyond things, beyond the negotiated agreement, and so I have received a lot of thank yous for covering that premium, the premium and the extra day. And so I'm sure Board members have received some of those as well, but it always warms my heart to receive some thank yous because we don't get those very often in this job. And so for teachers to take time out of their day and recognize that we're trying to find small and simple ways to go above and beyond and provide extra for our teachers, so it just warms my heart that a few of them would take the time to send a thank you email. My second thing is making sure that it's noted that we had a board retreat over this last month, and that is because it's important for Board members to receive their training as well. You know, we go through so much training in each and every different capacity of the job that we work in, and so just so you know, we have a board retreat to go over our board handbook and make sure that we're staying in our lanes and we're doing the proper work, but not only we're doing the work that we can do with the highest efficiency, that we can be impactful, effective Board members and represent our constituents and also move forward the work of the district. And so that takes training, as it does everything, and so I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were able to have a good, almost full day together and go over several items to help us become a better Board.
Thanks, Karen. Connie?
We have new chairs, I can't move in. I just want to say thanks to the new principals. My area has probably five, four brand new principals and one's a second year, and I'm so pleased with their attitude and how they are welcoming their students. It just thrills me, I think we're in for a really good year.
Thanks, Connie. Kim?
Thanks, and I wanted to also mention the board retreat, so thanks Karen for bringing that up. You know, as she said, we need time to make sure we're trained. I think that's always a helpful endeavor where we were out there basically, you know, trying to clean up our handbook and trying to clean up our committees, make sure we're using our committees as effectively as we can, you know, evaluating ourselves and our performance, and so we spent a large part of a day doing that together as a board, so just wanted to, like Karen said, make sure people are aware of that effort that goes in, and that I appreciate that effort from our fellow Board members as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Julie?
I'm really excited that this week I get to attend a new training at Churchill Junior High to help the staff learn how to integrate the middle years program of the IB program. It's going to be a very exciting thing for them to be able to extend the IB program into the junior high, and hopefully we'll be able to do that into the elementary incoming years, and I cannot wait to go and learn and see how that's going to work. I also just wanted to point out that I was really excited that one of the goals that we set as a board is that when we go into schools, we're going to ask our principals, what are you doing to help, and what's your school doing to help your kids reach the goal of improving by 1% in their achievement? And I think that's really exciting because I think it's going to bring us some really changed conversations with the people in our buildings, and I bet we're going to get some really great feedback ideas. I bet we'll have a lot of good news to share from here that comes from those conversations, too.
Thanks, Julie. I'll go ahead and do mine and then pass the meeting back over to Nicole. I want to just thank our superintendent for doing our PLC conference with Dr. Mohammed this last week, and all our schools were represented there, and that was pretty amazing to see everybody there learning and growing together and getting new ideas to how to implement our PLCs, and it was a great event. All my schools are on track to open on time, I'm so excited, we're down to the very last wire, and you know what, it's going to happen, and it's because of all the hard work of all our employees and Justin and his team, and so I'm super excited. I am a little stressed, my husband says I'm talking in my sleep, but I'm really trying to be super positive and be positive because our community is ready for it, and we'll be ready that first day. We have such professionals who do such a good job to make sure they're ready for those kids to walk in those doors, so I'm super excited to open those new schools. Yeah, that's me.
Thanks, and I apologize, you guys, I turned down the wrong street that was closed, and so had to detour, but I just wanted to recognize, I walked into the counseling center at Taylor'sville yesterday to change my daughter's schedule because there was a mistake, and they were clearly inundated, and I just want to give huge thanks to those counselors and everybody who's working so hard this summer to try to correct some of those schedule problems, and I went up to them and I said, I can come back, I have time later this week, just schedule me later. So, but thank you to those counselors and for all of the principals, I also have a lot of new principals, and I know some of them have done some really great things in the schools already to invite the students over to be able to see, you know, what's going on and be comfortable with the new principal and see all the fun things that are happening. I did want to also recognize the new teacher meeting that we were able to attend and the great work that they did for those new teachers, either new to our district or new to teaching period, or coming back from teaching from a hiatus, it was good to see some familiar faces that I knew, as well as just some brand new teachers, and I love the excitement that's always there. And then also our admin meeting, I appreciate the hard work that has gone into now moving on to training our admin in coaching and making this a model that we're going to do throughout the district, and I love that, I love the model that we have and that we're really pushing that and that we're stressing achievement in our district over anything else and academics, and I think that's something that's so important and significant. So that's my Good News Minute, and we'll wrap that up, thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and move on, we have recognitions next on our agenda, but we are actually going to move that because of some misunderstandings, so we're going to move that till 6:30 when those people who are being recognized get here. So we're going to move on to, we have granted elected officials participation, patron participation, we don't have anybody signed up, we do have citizens signed up for later, so I want to clarify if you're here for the public hearing, unless you would like to address the board now, and we misunderstood that, we're going to wait until the public hearing portion for the truth in taxation, so if that's okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to our consent items, we've had these for a few days to be able to ask questions and ask any information that we need to on that, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion on this?
I have one thing. In the minutes, Stacy, I would just like a clarification, in the minutes it talks about the app and how excited we are for the app, but it didn't capture my comment about how I've asked for the app for a while now and how excited I am, so because I'm on public record years ago asking for the app, I would like it to just be amended a little bit to say how grateful I am that the app is here. Okay, so can, I would just like to, the motion to amend to include my gratitude for the forthcoming app that I've asked for for years, something to that effect, anyway, so amended a motion, there you go.
We have a motion to amend, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend, so that would be an approval of the consent agenda with the amended item as requested. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to our action item, which is the naming of the dual language immersion, we're going to invite Principal Nick Blight. Sorry, you guys are second, I apologize. You can stay there if you want. This is for Valley Crest, for those of you who are wondering, our new Spanish DLI school, and we had apparently a presentation to the community, and so we're excited to hear what they thought.
Okay, thank you first to all of you gathered here, so I just want to talk to you a little bit about process, with the rebound study, the boundary study that was done, and we decided to move forward with the magnet option, Valley Crest as a name was lost, but we maintained the building for our school, and so we were left with a need for a new name, and we wanted that name to reflect who we were going to be without, up and down, thank you. Okay, so we came to this as with an approach of looking for a new school brand, with the directive we've been given to promote the school in a wider range, to bring in people who are currently leaving the district, people who are within this current dual immersion programs in the schools affected, maintaining them in the program. So what we did was a series of community surveys, some of you may have participated in some of them, some of them were online, some of them were in person, we went out to Granger Network Night, we went out to Hunter Network Night, we got kids involved, we had the kids design their own school mascot, which was a hugely popular activity, one of those, multiple of those ended up in our final candidates for the vote that we ended up having. And so we wanted to do something that was school-based and that would reflect that it was a dual immersion school to first person at first glance, and that was not anything that could be mistaken for any other school. One of the requisites we put on there was just, if you hear it one time, you should remember, that's the dual immersion school. The three finalists that we had from our community outreach were ALAS, which stands for Academic Language Academy for Spanish, SOL Academy, and Dos Mundos Academy. There were clear two front runners in our first preliminary surveys, which were SOL Academy and Dos Mundos Academy. We had our final, when we did our registration event last week, we did an in-person ballot, and Dos Mundos Academy was our top choice by a lot, it was a 72.5% of the vote came back. Dos Mundos means two worlds, if you don't know Spanish, we will teach you that far, at least, but a big part of bilingualism is that you get to operate in two different contexts and two different registers and two different languages, so we felt like that was a really good promotion of what we do at our school and just an introduction that kids were really excited about as well. You can see here with the Dos Mundos branding, we've already workshopped a couple of these through district, and we're continuing to iterate and look for something that would work well for us, but the axolotl combined with the idea of the spirit animals, have you ever seen Coco? Where we talk about we're moving between these two spheres, kids are really into that idea, and I really love the space it opens up for design and making the school really distinct, so that it stands out when people are driving by or taking their kids to baseball across the street.
Do we have any questions? Okay, so the recommendation is for the naming of, this is supposed to be Dos Menudos Academy?
Dos Mundos, not Menudos.
Ah, sorry. Dos Mundos.
Big difference.
That is a very, this is, you can tell what I'm studying on my Duolingo right now. Dos Mundos, sorry, Dos Mundos Academy, and if there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I have a question. You said it was overwhelmingly, was it mostly students that liked this name, or?
Students are compelling parents to choose this name.
The students love it the most?
Yeah, the parents like it as well. There were quite a few people who liked the SOL Academy for the branding also, but when we got the whole community, so when we did online surveys, it was closer, but Dos Mundos won every time. So once we got in-person, we got the whole demographic of the whole school, it was a well-attended event. Kids may have been compelling their parents, but I think we want both groups on board.
Thanks for that clarification. I just, maybe I should, I'll save it for after a motion, because it's a comment, not a question. Okay, all right, do we have a motion?
I move that we, I don't know what the motion should be, that we accept the name change of Valley Crest Elementary to Dos Mundos Academy.
Second. I have a motion and a second to change the name of Valley Crest Elementary to Dos Mundos Academy. Go ahead, comment.
Just comment, just for the sake of any of those who were diehard SOL Academy fans, I like that one, too. I think the branding was pretty cool, it was a nice, nice idea, but I will go in favor of what the community wants over there, so.
If we want to use it for another school in the future, I'm pretty.
All right.
We still need a second.
Julie's second.
Oh, did you second?
Yeah.
Good job, Julie.
All right, if there are no further comments, then we'll go ahead, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We are looking forward to this. It's exciting.
Hey Nick, real quick, what's your enrollment at?
So we're currently, the projection's at 5:50, in focus as of right now, it's about 4:90, so we're getting all the paperwork done. Registration event already happened, parents are coming by constantly. The doors don't open yet, so we have to pop them open, that's the other thing with the security doors, we're working on getting that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Nice, nice, awesome. Okay, now, we are going to move on to our information items, our capital construction update. Justin and Chris, we're going to invite you guys back up, thank you so much for being patient.
Sorry, we're literally still getting updates, we still have a lot of people working tonight.
Good, thank you.
Good, yes, good. We're getting real-time updates.
Good evening, Board members and district leadership. We'll be quick, I know we really want to focus on a couple of projects that are causing us all a great deal of angst, so we'll get there. As far as security, we do have three projects we're wrapping up that will get us, Valley Crest will be our last elementary that's finishing up, they had a punch list today, and hopefully everything will get buttoned up either tomorrow or very quickly here. Cypress and Brock Bank are also going to have a security component, which will be great to move those from in-progress to completed, so very, very close, which we're excited about.
Just nice guy in rep, so that's the last elementary?
That we have to do security.
I mean, I just think that's worth some celebration, that has been a work, we've been working on that for so long, am I correct, it's like 54 schools? Maybe not that many, because, does anybody know the total, just offhand? It's a lot of schools, and that's a huge accomplishment, and like whoever needs to celebrate, can we make sure they get celebrated?
Those include the elementaries, but it also includes two high schools, Skylining and Cypress, and five junior highs are also, have been caught up in that as well, so we're trying to tick those off as well, but all the elementaries would be, will be done as soon as we get Valley Crest buttoned up this week, so thank you. Cottonwood Flooring, I know my team was there, they just, I saw them walk in as I was here, so I haven't heard the update, but we're hoping to get that all buttoned up for the start of school, there's a couple of odds and ends going on with the different flooring, the contractor they're getting that taken care of. Hunter Junior Classroom is on here, but it's all buttoned up for the remodel this last summer that the Granite Builders did, they did a great job there. The Hunter High Track expansion is 98% complete, the remaining portion is the ADA seating in the bleachers, and it should be, it should be buttoned up. This is early August, we wrote this two weeks ago or whatever it was, but I think we're there, so we're real, real close if we're not. Hunter High Preschool Courtyard is done, and that took longer than we'd liked, but it's finally done, so that's a huge milestone for us. The site drainage project, we have, in the past, every August with our monsoon rain seemed to flood Hunter off the back of the new addition, and so we've had a project to tie some drainage together that should solve that, and we can be done with that, and so he is almost there, it'll be finished early August, so we're excited about hopefully beating the monsoon rains this year. And then Churchill, there was a partial undone piece that had to be buttoned up this summer once we could get the roof back open, and it's the drainage and the downspouts, and they are all finished there, so that's good news. Magna Elementary, we are done with the abatement, that was great, and I was there this morning, the teachers have moved in, it fills and looks great. I know Chris has been out, I walked with Chris last week, it feels good, Ben is not stressed right now, huge props to Christie, the custodian, he, she's been great working with our team, getting that school into shape, Micah sent a bunch of custodians over yesterday and today, I believe, so it just feels good, if you walk in there, it doesn't feel stressed. There's, the metal on the outside will go on through August and a little bit of September, the panels, the PV panels, the solar panels are complete in the front, they're not complete on top, but that will continue to happen, but the kiddos can move in, it's been newly painted, newly carpeted, and again, I said it smells and feels good, so we're feeling good about Magna. Brock Bank, we're also feeling good about, we're telling ourselves that. The classrooms, they are actually moving in, we've got lights going in, we're really excited about that. The front office is what's taken the longest amount of time because of the abatement that had to happen in the old front office. Unfortunately, Brock Bank is probably our worst building in the district as far as asbestos, everything you touch there is hot with asbestos, and so we didn't actually see the abatement contractor go until about two weeks ago, they've been there the whole time, and so now that they're gone, we can back, go back and get all the work that needs to be buttoned up. So I just talked to Tim a few minutes ago, he is planning on, maybe I shouldn't say that, but they want to have a walk and learn like Cypress next Tuesday, and they're going to talk about it tomorrow with their staff and figure out when that will be, what time, but we'll have kids in there learning, and they just, they painted the other set of doors today blue, so it's really looking good on the outside. Anyway, question.
I just have a comment. When we walked through, it did fill, I mean, it's still a construction zone filling, but I think what you pointed out is, it's, the teachers can move in their classrooms, like we're ready for kids, it's just going to look different, maybe the first week or two, until that new, you know, area is done, and, but Tim is doing such a great job getting that ready for the students, so.
Yes, Tim is, you're right, and I'm going to continue to shout out to custodians, Jared, who's the custodian that has been phenomenal as well, and his crew have been working, Micah is going to have more custodians come tomorrow to really help Tim tomorrow and Friday and get that ready to go. The hallways have not been cleaned this summer because of all the construction, so once we get those swept and cleaned up, again, those classrooms are carpeted, most of them now have the lights in there and the furniture been put back, so it does feel like a classroom again, and the teachers are welcome tomorrow to get things set up the way they want, and the front office, we'll get the front portion of the office open, the counseling portion will probably start the first of the year, the first week or two, over in the Sighance Building, and Tim's on board with that, and so as soon as we get the counseling portion done, they can move over and then take their new offices, so. We are moving, it's, that's been our scariest one all year, and.
And I think it's our oldest school in the district now, oldest building.
I've heard that as well.
For one of our, as one of our schools goes, so it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, just add to that, the, I'm really excited about Magna Elementary, Magnus Team Academy, I apologize, it's looking really great, and I was able to walk through the Brock Bank building a few days ago as well, and that's progressing as well, these are going to be nice facilities for our kids once they're all done. I think some people don't realize how much stress is on you during, so sometimes Justin comes into my office and cries in fetal position about some of the challenges that are, but him and his crew do a great job of trying to stand on top of all these projects, trying to get them done in a short window, and these are, these are going to be some great treasures for this community.
Thank you, yes, we are excited, thank you. Spring Lane demolition, the building is down, they've hauled it off, we're just working on a few backfill items, I think I mentioned in the last board meeting, the city is not going to take it until next year, so we had to fill, you approved a change, I think last month, to bring the level of fill up so we wouldn't have standing water, but we'll leave that site clean, and then next year when holiday takes it, they can start their park construction.
And by next year, do you mean January 1, or do you mean later than that? January 1? Thank you.
Sounds like January 1, great. Taylorville High Auditorium, the, I'm not sure if I have it on here, so I'll speak about it now, the floor is done, they have a brand new stage floor, which is great, and I've heard already glowing reviews about the new stage floor, so that's exciting, and the lighting is progressing, the house lighting, we won't be 100% done until a couple weeks into the school year, there's some parts that still haven't arrived, materials haven't arrived, so we're waiting on those for the contractor to finish up, but we have been in contact with Mark and his staff, and so I think they're aware of that, and should not be a surprise, but we are hoping to get the house lights done quickly.
Just to clarify, when it says stage lighting, you're talking about like the house lights that are on the stage, not?
Correct, we have not delved into the theatrical lighting, this is just the house lighting.
I just want to make sure people understand that.
Right.
And are not confused.
Thank you. We are working on the other with budgeting and figuring that out, but that hasn't started yet as far as the theatrical lighting. Transportation and, I'll just combine these two real quickly, transportation and the maintenance both had fuel tank upgrades this year required by the state, our tanks were very, very old, and they required that we needed to pull out the old tanks and replace them, that's been a painful project, but we are there, I know Dr. Gaddy's excited about having his transportation open again for buses, and I actually fueled up there the other day on flame, or I was in, on fumes, and so I pulled in there and got fuel, and it worked, so I was excited about that. So those are two good projects to have done that the state required us to get done, and so we're excited to have those, all but a few minor touches, we're there. Valley Crest, security I mentioned just a minute ago, the office is in, the new space, we're just trying to finish up the last remaining counseling or conference room slash itinerary spaces across the hall where the old office was, and so just wrapping that up, I know we want to get that front door open, and I know I've talked to Rex today from our maintenance department, and the painting is almost all done in the parking lot, we will have a fence in front, but that won't be for a couple more weeks because of the lead time on the materials, and so there'll be a new busing loop for the, and a new parent drop as well, so we're excited about the rebrand of what was Valley Crest, so there's an update on that going, and here's a photo that's a little bit older, but a couple weeks ago, but there's a, looking out, front office. looking out, the front office there and the main doors, and then the one on the right is where the old front office was, and it will now be a conference room, I believe that's how it's going to be used. Good, thank you. Carbon monoxide projects, we did, we are required by the state to get these done, we did bid them, we had no takers, so we have to rebid them. We have been running our department, so we will try to get them out this month and see if we can get people interested in bidding on those projects. There's a tree project going on, we got some money from the state to do this Mountain View Corridor air quality project, and they're planting trees at one, two, three, four, five, six locations, which we're excited about, and that's going nicely. It'll probably be another couple of weeks or so before we get that all buttoned up. This slide is just talking about the projects that we had going on, I've mentioned most of those. Kerns High Counseling, we're very close, that's a Granite Builders project, those guys have been great out there. They will finish up the painting, it was supposed to be there yesterday or today, and then carpet goes down, and we can then move, find some desks, move them in, and they can have their, the counselors can have those four offices that have been being built all I think we've talked about it, all these other ones on here, there were some flooring projects that were buttoned up, which is great, Rolling Mills is one of those. And then if it's okay, we want to jump and talk about Skyline first, and then come back and talk about, talk about Cypress at the end.
So, members of the board, staff, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the, on the two high school rebuilds. Skyline is going very, very well right now, we just completed the one-year warranty, and so we have accumulated a list of all of those one-year warranty items, and the contractor's currently working on those right now. On the performing arts, a tremendous amount of work is being completed, and when I say performing arts, it's also the H, H-I-N-J portions of the academic, so those are actually moving very fast at the moment, and they're really starting to look like classrooms, really stood, like educational spaces, all the framing, the drywall, the lights, all of the different things are going, and the clouds have been going on in the auditorium area, which is really neat. And then a significant amount of site work was done this summer. The Upper West Parking Lot portions have been completed with the asphalt and landscaping and different things along those lines, so the Upper West Parking Lots are now also complete. And then everything is being done in preparation for the last semester of the existing auditorium building. The district completed some abatement this summer in order to try to shorten the amount of abatement that needs to be done at the end of the semester in order to turn over the building for demolition as soon as possible, in order to complete the last, the last major exterior portion of the site work, which is the long drop-off loop that's, that goes clear to the, to the academic building. So this is a good aerial that we took a few weeks ago, just showing the progress on the academic building, and you can see the, the H Wing in particular is, is, you know, complete from the exterior portion, and then all, we're just needing the storefront along the front of the auditorium, but the stairways in, there's lots of great progress being done on the inside of the building, and that, this is the view from the west, it's not showing the, the parking lot there done yet, but all of the things from the west view, the end of the classrooms in H-I-N-J. So you can see the clouds in the auditorium building for, for Skyline are, have been installed, and the classroom, this is on the upper floors, and H and J in the, in the tile in the hallways, it's really starting to look complete. So this is the very last of the rear seating in the auditorium piece that will be formed and poured, those are all the, the foam blocks that go underneath those concrete stairs. And then we completely redid the entire frontage, like we mentioned at the last board meeting, along Upland Drive, so all of that has been completed, and as is those pieces, and then there's the landscaping along those portions along the west side. I don't have any changes, I don't have any changes to bring before the board for Skyline.
I just want to, can you remind me, so our students are going to be getting into that in January for the second semester, correct?
The students will be, we will be taking down the old auditorium in January, abating it.
And students will not be in the new theater building until...
Until the fall.
That's right.
Fall of twenty-six.
I knew that, and then, so then...
I'm nodding to that, to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, fall of twenty-six.
And a, a year from now, construction should be complete.
On the building, that, that front driveway will complete next fall.
When will we say we're done with Skyline?
Fall of next year.
Fall twenty-twenty-six.
Fall of twenty-twenty-six, we will be done, done, except for the warranty punch stuff, yes.
Okay, thanks.
That's, that's correct, because we're actually, what we're doing is we're, yeah, so, so thank you, I appreciate that clarification. So, that west parking, while they will be driving and dropping off through that area, that west parking is not occupiable, we're actually relocating the contractor's trailers, because right now they're right next to the old auditorium building, and that whole area where they're at right now is new parking lot that we're doing next spring, summer, and completing in the fall.
And I will say...
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
I will say, I'm calling all my guys heroes. One of our heroes, Ashton, worked with the state fire marshal, I don't know if there was an arm wrestle or what, but we were able to convince him that we needed to keep the west side as a secondary drop-off loop until we can get the one on the front east side open. So, they made, we made some accommodations to make that happen so that no safety was jeopardized, but it was a huge milestone to, to get a pull-off, so that's going to be huge for the school.
One hundred percent, and we don't ask how he did it, we just know it happened. So, it was an excellent job by Ashton, and Rich, and the rest of the team to pull that off.
And to clarify, just so people know, when you say fall, fall technically goes to December twentieth, technically, right? So, I could just hear your hesitation in promising fall of twenty-six, so just to manage everybody's expectations.
Oh, no, no, I'm not hesitating, promising fall.
It might not be August, it could be a little bit later, that's all I'm saying.
Right, right now the schedules are September, October for completion of the site work.
There you go. I just want to make sure people aren't assuming it's August thirty-first, and everything is locked up and tidy, and all construction vehicles are gone, I just want to manage expectations.
And, and to expound on that, we've had punch lists going on this last year, even though we open next year, we'll have punch lists for probably another year as well, so even though the construction will be done, they'll still be there buttoning up things and punch lists and those kind of things.
Right, that's, and, and, and as was mentioned before, you know, the school sacrifice and the district sacrificing, getting that auditorium down so that we can be complete with all of that work next fall.
That was going to carry into twenty-seven, and so by, as was mentioned, the sacrifice of the school and to, to take it down a little bit earlier helps everything get wrapped up in the fall of twenty-six.
Okay, so, as was mentioned, there's just a considerable amount of work going on at Cypress still, and will continue to go on. I wasn't kidding when I said we're still getting updates from all of the crews and workforces that are still on-site right now. So, the soccer field sod is down, has been down for, for quite some time, the sod outside, the kindergarten classroom area, the play area there is complete, been completed, the exterior metal panels on the front of the school have been completed, there's a few little tiny touch-up things that they were working on the last few days on that, and the main entrance landscaping is being completed. They actually had the sod that they installed in the last couple of days in the courtyard in between the H Academic Wing and the, and the Commons Area was completed. The indoor track was completed the last couple of days in the athletics area, scoreboard's been installed. There's quite a bit of work that's completing in the Commons Area right now, so, and then the classrooms are being completed, mostly from a technology standpoint, our, our good long-term friends from certain companies who I won't mention in a public meeting, are continuing to work to complete all the technology aspects of it, and the, the very large CTE component that we have at Cypress in their building, has had their equipment being installed, and that all the classroom chairs and furniture are there, and the teachers' supplies are on-site and are being carried to their various classrooms, so. This is the soccer field sod, it actually is knitting together really, really well right now, and this was the sod that was, once again, that was put down in the kindergarten classroom play area, and the exterior metal panels that are shown in the picture on the left have been completed, and all of, that main vestibule is also completed and the flooring is in, so, you know, I, I could bring you pictures on my phone from today, but these were the board presentation things, and the, the pool school, like I said, has been complete, the pool's filled and ready to go. The indoor running track has actually been completed, I was walking around on it about two hours ago, and all of the storefront is all completed. Josh and his team have been working there for the last week, been doing registration, and it was, it was good to talk and visit with them this afternoon, their, their spirits are high, there's lots, there's lots and lots and lots of work that they're doing right now, and these areas are actually completed that are shown in these photos as progress. If you want to go ahead and go on to the next one, all, all of the flooring, and this is on the upper floor outside the media center, and then the appliances in the serving floor, we're completing our inspections with the health service department this week as well, and then this is what your classrooms look like, except there's a lot of teacher supplies in a lot of the classrooms now, and that will continue all through tomorrow when the teachers are on-site. And a lot of those giant pallets of equipment are moving into the classrooms right now, the stage rigging and the stage floor is, was being, was being installed when I left, so, and then this is the upper floor of the auditorium. And it's a lovely, lovely sight from the aerial. I believe that the football inner squad scrimmage is this Friday evening, so that will be a fun event to have on the Bryant Field. And I do not have any changes to bring before the board for Cypress this evening. I believe Justin has some further commentary.
Just again, to not let the custodians not be recognized, Scott and his team have been fabulous at Cypress, in fact, today I bumped into them, and they were very pleased with their efforts to get all the floors, all the stuff, that you saw some pictures of, of pallets of stuff that for teachers, had been moved into the classrooms by the three of them, minus one floor because the elevator did not pass today that we'd hoped, and they'll be back tomorrow. Our contractor's committed to have either someone to run the elevator tomorrow, or they will have fifteen people to carry all that stuff up the stairs. I understand there's an email that went out asking for people in our office here to help, it might be more to help the teachers set the room up, because we'll get, or the contractor will get the merchandise to the classrooms so that they don't have to carry up the stairs. That's still being, as we're, as we're sitting here, there's updates coming, so that's the latest, but Josh and his team are there, working very hard, they've had registration last week, and I know on Monday they're going to have a walk and learn to have the kids see their classrooms and understand where they'll be spending their day going forward this next year. Any questions about any of our projects, or...
Just thank you, thank you for doing all that hard work. I, I was talking to my cousin who went to a brand-new high school in St. George, and she said they couldn't use the whole second floor the first year of school because it, they, they just couldn't get it done, and they needed somewhere for the kids to go, so the fact that we might have little minor things here and there in a huge school is really heartwarming that we can actually, we'll be able to use this whole school eventually this whole year, so, thanks so much for all your hard work.
You're welcome. It, it is our job, and we recognize that, but I would say that there is no other district that's pulling off what we're pulling off with these projects. We had Westlake last year at Skyline, now Skyline and Cypress, and the list continues, we know we have more coming, and we're excited about that, but I do feel like our team is outstanding, and they do a great job, and that, that extends to Rex's maintenance department, to Rick Anthony's AV, people that have been great to help us in a pinch with hardware right now with internet, we're, we're borrowing the internet because the infrastructure's not there. The district has been awesome to jump in, and everyone has been willing to, to lift. I even saw Tyler lift a box the other day, which was outstanding. So, just one.
And only for the photo, or was that... No, actually, it's been a huge lift by all of the district departments to even get as far as we are right now, so I know Dallin from Justin's staff, he, I would say he lives nearby, but that's not fair because he probably spends more time at the school now currently than he does at his residence, and so I, just, it's been a huge lift by all the, by all the district departments to get as far as we are, so.
And I think it's good to recognize also, we appreciate that you have Magnus Dem, Brock Bank, Cypress, Skyline, you know, our Dos Mundos Academy, all of these projects, I don't know that we've ever had anything this intense ever before, so we appreciate the hard work that you guys have done. This has been, I hope you get some rest later, Justin.
Thank you. Yeah, after we start.
I hear the sanatorium is very rusted.
Thank you so much, thank you for all you guys do. All right, we are going to move on, we, just an update, just for time purposes, we're actually going to, we asked Patrick to put off the Teacher Merit Award Plan until next month, just so we have enough time to do our SALT presentation. So we're going to invite Dr. Nurdan and Leslie Bell and Dr. Howe to come up for the presentation.
We're trying to wrap up this presentation a little after six, so, sorry, can we be quick?
Yes, we'll go.
We need to go to executive session, we'll be back by six-thirty.
Okay, we'll go super fast.
There's a lot of whispering, so I'm just going to say on record what they're talking about. They're talking about what time we need to be back here for the next part of our meeting, with the truth and taxation listed at seven-thirty, but we have invited our National History Day winners to be here at six-thirty, so to not make those families wait, the goal is to get back here by six-thirty and honor the time that we told them to be here, which makes our executive session short. That's as much as I know, I'll let Ben clarify the rest.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do our SALT presentation, and that should take us to about six-thirty, we'll do our recognition, and then we will move into executive session very quickly after that.
Okay. Our, we hope to be about twenty minutes, so we'll go quick.
We apologize, she's right, we have time-sensitive items tonight, and we're trying to get all this scheduled at the exact time so that we can start our tax hearing as publicized and in accordance with state law, so we apologize and appreciate everybody's flexibility on our schedule tonight.
And part of the reason why is because we, per the state law, they have asked us not to take care of any, any items of business after our truth and taxation, we should just be done with that business, so that's why we're trying to get done with it, so, anyway, go ahead.
Great. In the Granite School District, there is a leadership that is intended to help guide and lead the school district, and for years, a committee called the District Improvement Steering Committee has existed, and as we met at the beginning of this year, we talked about what we were hoping to accomplish and the focus and energy we wanted to, to have towards our students, and we decided that we're going to rename our committee so that it represents what our focus is, and so our committee is called the Student Achievement Leadership Team because our focus is on improving student achievement. In fact, our, our phrase is improving student achievement by improving instruction, we are closing the achievement gap for every student. SALT membership is made up of all members of the executive leadership team. In addition to those folks, we've got all of the school leadership and improvement directors, we call those SLids, but they are the people that oversee schools. We've got representatives from every... We've got representatives from every department in our district, usually the directors and maybe some of their associate directors. Additionally, this year, we added some principals. We've got four elementary.
When you say this year, we really started this last school year. So, when you say this year, it sounds like we didn't start this five minutes ago.
My apologies. I'm giving an update on this here. We just finished, but you're right. This, this last year, we've added principals. We think that the voice of principals really needs to be part of the vision and creation of any type of effort to, to help our schools. So, we've invited a representative portion of our principals to be part of it. We've invited four principals, elementary principals, three junior high principals, and one senior high principal. The charge of our SALT committee is fourfold. First and foremost, it's improving student academic outcomes. One way we're going to do that is we're, we've, we've set a floor. This floor establishes a minimum level of achievement that we expect every school to get to. Obviously, we're always trying to get better, but we are not going to rest if a school is below that floor. We're going to do more and more to ensure that all of the schools are at least above that floor. We'll talk more about that in a moment. This is Granite School District's guiding coalition. It is the group that is driving all of the, the efforts to make improvements and to guide the efforts of our school district. Therefore, every member of that committee is important. Power dynamics need to be such that people's voices are heard and that no one has more power or more voice than someone else. We, we, we talked about that a lot because it's important that we get everybody engaged.
I think it's important, we use this phraseology and these semantics, guiding coalition. You probably remember if you were with the Dr. Muhammad presentation about what the purpose and the intent of guiding coalition is. And so, this is built in and this is something that we had adopted prior to his presentation. So, you can kind of see that work being implemented in this process and many of our schools were highly successful with their PLCs.
Thank you. Professor Bandura in 1977 coined the phrase self-efficacy. It has been adopted by educational leaders and turned into collective efficacy. And we, we review this statement every meeting. And it is a group's shared belief in its conjoined capability to organize and execute the courses of action required to produce given levels of attainment. If we believe we can get this done, we can get this done. And that is what drives us, that we have high expectations and we are not going to stop until we get it done.
I just reiterate that when we say this, we say this a lot, but collective advocacy is actually a pretty powerful principle when you think about it. And it's, simply put, it's the notion that every child can succeed and that we actually believe that.
And really the highest on Hattie's ratings of effectiveness. So, my role is with school leadership and improvement. And so, I'm specifically, and we love acronyms, getting to work and consider myself one of the SLids, the School Leadership Improvement Directors. And a conversation that we've had that I think really sets the stage for our philosophical approach to this is there are a lot of things we're juggling in, in our profession in schools that are important, but they can be kind of categorized into, drawing from that Eisenhower matrix, the important urgent things that are really time-sensitive and the important not-urgent things that aren't as time-sensitive. And the challenge we have in schools is there are so many balls being juggled. And a lot of those have this time sensitivity, or at least the perception of this time sensitivity, that things that are extremely important but don't necessarily have the same kind of due dates to them, you know, some of the instruction and the observations, the PLC discussions that go on, often can fall by the wayside because there are emergency things or fires to put out or, or immediate responses that are needed that will trump the other. And they're all important, but there needs to be some intentionality to how to address those. So, some of my work with the school leadership and improvement is really that we are trying to be very supportive of principals in that important and not-urgent and sometimes often-forgotten category, which is in the Eisenhower matrix, called that values quadrant. Specifically, we're really trying to focus on these five areas of instructional leaderships, specifically shared leadership. Superintendent Horsey just talked about that. And Dr. Muhammad made such a great emphasis on that of the importance of, of councils within your school, these guiding coalitions and leaning into that because it's more than just a one person, it's more than just one principal. But having those groups in a shared leadership fashion really can move the needle for a long-term. School culture can't be emphasized enough. And just as Superintendent Horsey said a moment ago, there's, there's this notion and wanting to make sure the culture believes that all students can learn, number one. And number two, that we as educators believe that we can help all students learn. Those might sound like one and the same, but there is a difference between them. Knowing that they can learn and that we have the capacity to, to support them and actually get them there. Instructional effectiveness is, is enormous and that comes as, as SLids are coming into the, the schools and working directly with principals and teachers and observations, gathering data and saying, hey, we are about a results-oriented process here. It's not just good enough that I taught it all, I went through it all, I checked all the boxes and, and my students didn't get there. It's, it's got to be really zeroed in on what were the results? Did our students actually arrive and did they, did they learn? The structures facilitate that heavily. It was wonderful to get to have not just Dr. Muhammad, but everybody in these leadership teams from across our entire district in the same room, hearing the same thing and having similar conversations, although they vary from table to table because every school's got a little bit of a different need or, or location along that journey. But to be focused on what are our structures to facilitate this? How are we addressing the fundamental PLC question? And those structures need to be, yes, we're meeting systematically these PLCs to unpack these standards and say, how are we going to make sure students have learned? But they've also got to have those next questions of how are we going to respond when they, inevitably, some inevitably don't learn at the same rate as others. There's got to be a systematic response to it. And that, as SLids, is what we're trying to help facilitate with our, with our principals and our leadership teams of the schools. Finally, the last one there is family engagement and really looking at a dual-capacity framework, knowing that this, this is pulling jointly, families and educators alike, knowing what our common goals are and, and making sure we're clear about those and utilizing all the leverage we can to pull all at once. That, that captures the bulk of this on, just by sake of time, let me go to the next one. Mitch, if you could advance this slide. As I mentioned before, one of the challenges to doing what I just described is the important urgent things that will, will sidetrack a lot of the conversations that need to happen around instructional leadership and student learning. And to, to help facilitate or support that, Granite School District has staffed to parent advocate, specifically a district ombudsman. That's Taylor Kater, who's, who's come into that role already and, and really done an effective job in the early goings of this job to be able to help support these important needs that often are what took the school leadership improvement directors and the principals on all their attention so that they never could quite get to the important but-not-urgent that values quadrant kind of thing. So, what is an ombudsman specifically? It's, it's someone that is going to be able to be a facilitator for our, our, our parents, our students, our families. They, this person really fills a, you know, a neutral niche, but helps families navigate what can be really difficult to be able to have, there's a concern to reach out and to have someone that's connecting both that family, the, the parent, the student, with the right people, whether that is within the district administration, a school administration, but trying to find ways to really help support that. The core principles I like that are listed there talk about independence, impartiality, neutrality, confidentiality, and informality. Now, it's new and for some, I think it's a little bit on both ends of this. Parent side of it, educator side of it, how does this fit? And already I've heard comments back from principals that I'm helping to support saying, hey, this, this has been really nice to be able to find how seamless this was to get this parent meeting set up because Taylor was able to facilitate that. I've heard that from my SLids as well. So, there is some power to that and, and these are the things that he's really targeting. Just to clarify, what is a district ombudsman and what is it not? I think I've already hit these first ones pretty well, but really listening to concerns and clarifying policies, rights, and options. Sometimes that's just some education that's needed from a family. What, what a school and a school district can do and what it can't do. Coaches, parents, and staffs on the productive next steps and communication, facilitates problem-solving. This one's really delicate, that fourth bullet of making referrals to the right office, whether it's, you know, school admin, special ed, Title IX, 504. There are, there are roles that the district ombudsman does not take on. And that's where that person, more than, than maybe the, the families that are asking the questions, our district ombudsman Taylor is going to know, hey, this is one that really needs to be handled by our Title IX office and be able to facilitate that process. Finally, identifies trends and provides systematic feedback. What a district ombudsman isn't is a person that's taking sides or acting as a champion or attorney, overturning decisions either at district or to school level. As I mentioned a moment ago, is not replacing the actual departments and processes with, processes that we have that are so critical, our Title IX, special education. Or this isn't a person that's serving as the district's official notice channel for, for legal claims. And I think that would really undermine what he's trying to accomplish and, and the, the relationship of trust that he's able to facilitate with families. So, this, this position's powerful in the sense that it's going to, whether it's 10, 20, 30, 50, 80% of the, the important urgent things that we're maybe pulling our school leadership improvement directors onto putting out these kind of fires are going to free up some of that time to be that much more dialed into being at the school, doing observations with principals, bringing data to unpack where our students at and how well is it being facilitated and to unpack what steps and how, what's the progress like on your action steps for your continual improvement plan. So, that's the real focus. We've got a great group for it. We're excited about it in our, our SLids.
I mentioned before this concept of a floor. And, and what that has created is something that we call boost schools. We establish this floor and any school that has, has student achievement below that floor is going to get some additional support. We've been through this quite a bit because the state, through the federal government, has mandated some sort of programs like this. And it sort of feels like we're always being pulled around by our nose to this new program. And we're trying to say, we're going to be done with that. We're going to, we're going to get above that so that our schools never get involved in that kind of accountability. Instead, we're going to provide the supports early so that they achieve at a level that gets them way above whatever federal or state program might exist. Things that we are considering is mostly Utah's accountability model. But in addition to that, we're going to look at things like grades and credits and ACT scores and WE to proficiency and literacy scores and other formative assessments to help ensure that we are picking the right schools that need additional support. We set that minimum floor and we are probably going to have only the capacity, I'll get into that, to, to serve a certain number of schools initially. We're going to adopt a cohort model. And, and so, our first cohort has nine schools. I'll get to that in a moment. Every three years, we'll reassess. We'll look at three-year trends, data, and then we'll, we'll make some adjustments. And hopefully, schools will be getting out in that three-year cycle. Our goal is to ensure that student achievement rises to a level that is above the floor and that we make sure that we provide not just an equal amount of support to schools, but an equitable amount to ensure that schools that have the most need get the most resources. In that cohort number one, we've got six elementaries, two junior highs, and a high school. And here are those listed. I'm going to give you quickly some things that we've been doing already in those boost schools. We've gone around with district directors and principals and done instructional rounds and identified a baseline of instructional needs. We've helped those schools develop continuous improvement plans that articulate addressing needs and targeting high-leverage strategies during instruction. We're beginning to provide, and we've had, we've provided and will continue to provide professional development that's targeted to those school improvement plans and to instruction. We're, we're offering teachers additional planning time to ensure that they can implement the new skills that they've learned in their instruction. We're building out more ways for teachers to be leaders and to build their capacity as teacher leaders. That's the surefire way to, to improve a school is, is help build their capacity to be leaders. We've also added additional administration. Every single one of our boost school elementaries has a full-time instruct, assistant principal, which is thanks to the board. Additionally, we've, we've activated our SLids and we've said, hey, your job is to help give the boost and make sure that you come and get support from us at the district level if you need more. In addition to that, we've created guiding coalitions at each of the school levels. We wanted to make sure that we didn't just create plans for disparate groups and think, well, that plan will just work. Elementaries have specific needs and let's make sure that we understand those needs. So, at every single level, elementary, junior high, and high school, we've got some guiding coalitions. They're made up of principals, district directors, and superintendency members to ensure that we are focusing our school improvement efforts or our district supports on the things that make a big difference that are identified as needs. So, for example, this year in elementary schools, we really focused in on ensuring that they all have, to Tyler's point about structures, a really good master schedule. That that master schedule has built into it times sufficient to meet the requirements around ELA, to make sure that math gets the, the right amount of time, that there are interventions. We focused in on a math masters program that is going to ensure that more is given to math instruction so that we can improve in that area. That's kind of been what we've been doing at the elementary level. At junior high, this guiding coalition helped to inform that we've got sixth graders coming up in a lot of our schools, sixth-grade teachers, and they need some additional support. So, we built out a completely separate and unique professional development program that is concluded today, at least for the summer, it'll go ongoing throughout the year to help our new sixth-grade teachers. We've had over 50 teachers participate in that PD, somebody from every single school. I'm beginning, we have not formed our high school guiding coalition, but we are beginning to do that this, this school year. Additional supports. Every single school is going to have more administrative support.
Can I just speak to something? I think you, you hit on something that's going to bother me if we don't mention it. I think what's important about this guiding coalition is for, I mean, I've been with the district now for 17 years and been in the room where we make a lot of those decisions. And it's not like they're bad decisions, but it would be, we would be remiss if we did not engage and collaborate with our local school leaders in terms of how we implement policies and make decisions. And it does feel like to some degree, we felt like we had a monopoly in that room on all the good ideas and suggestions. And so, part of this guiding coalition concept is that we're collaborating directly with principals on the local level to know and understand how our policies and our practices and our programs will impact them. And they're expected to speak up and advocate for their schools and help us to know how our decision-making will impact them so that we are actually moving the needle and, and working together in collaboration.
Thank you. I, I'm inspired by, I can't remember the, the author of this, but it was in one of my courses at BYU and it, it was, if policy implementers are not part of policymaking, it probably won't happen. And, and that's our, our effort is to ensure that we've got policy implementers informing us as we make policies, we develop our plans. So, I was just saying that we've increased administrative support so that every single elementary school in the Granite School District now has some level of additional support beyond the principal, which will enable the principal to more focus on instructional leadership rather than all those emergencies that pull them away. That doesn't mean it's a fix solved, but it is, yeah, it's done. But we are getting, we're getting there. We've, we've created additional time for planning and PLCs. We've created, not created, we've aligned our professional learning. So, the professional learning we're providing to principals, to coaches, our principal PLCs, all of that is becoming more aligned and geared specifically toward improving student achievement by improving instruction. I was talking to a brand-new principal in Granite School District. He, he wasn't brand-new to, to the job, but he was new to us. And he said, man, I love Granite. Granite's focus is on student achievement. Every meeting I'm in. I said, that is right. That is exciting. We have a new, I don't want to say new, we just have a new commitment to coaching. Everybody's going to be coached. It is an expectation in the Granite School District that you will participate in coaching. Principals are going to get coached. Principals are going to get coached, teachers are going to get coached, the superintendent's going to get coached, we're all being coached.
All right. In wrapping this presentation up, I get to be the cheerleader. That's my favorite part. So I'd like to proudly report that we've had over 2,000 site visits by district directors out at schools. So yay, that's so exciting. That's, on average, each school has received about 25 visits. So really, and I can tell you that we can do way better than that because I know a lot of directors and even an assistant superintendent herself that missed some of the visits on the chart. So honestly, I think we're having way more touches than 2,000 at each school, which is very exciting.
She means that we haven't documented it. We've made the visits.
Yes. And I think we can count more than the 2,000, really. Okay, so what happens in these SALT meetings? We have monthly meetings where we review the measures of the strategic plan, and we look at leading and lagging indicators to make sure that we're on track. And then in real time, we're adjusting our action plans. So the strategic plan is fluid in that as we look at the measures and the indicators that would say, are we on track or are we not on track? How are we adjusting what we're doing in real time? And we're also including that type of thinking into our boost schools and other school data. So across the district, we're aligning the strategic plan with the school continual improvement goals in that way, and then adjusting, if schools need additional support in a continual improvement goal, then we're adjusting our strategic plan goals in order to fit that need if we see trends across the district. And then specifically for boost schools, we're having a real-time discussion about what's happening on the front lines. So as they're doing these instructional rounds out at the boost schools, the directors are bringing that information back, and we're adjusting different things. And they're also, for the first time in real time ever, asking for support or materials that are needed, and then we're able to allocate and deploy those resources out to the school side, which is very exciting. And then, like the last bullet says, assignments are made to bring about to ensure that action and student achievement is increasing on the front level. So we're looking at all these indicators at the data really carefully, and then people are also attending these schools at the frontline level and bringing back what supports and additional materials or personnel or things like that, and we're making the adjustments here at the school level to help support that need.
Final slide. Success will be determined by how effective student achievement increases. It won't be about, we did all these cool things. It will be, did student achievement rise? And that is our goal, and we will find that success, and we'll celebrate it with you often.
I just want to thank these folks for this presentation and all the members of our SALT team. This is exciting to see kind of the magic happening, and it all ties back to this notion of collective advocacy, that we all believe every child in Granite School District can learn at high levels. And so the real-time notion of being able to assess data and provide real-time supports to schools because their slids are in their schools, they know what's happening, every district director knows that they're not just responsible for this aspect of policy or programmatic implementation, but they're responsible for student outcomes. And this is the emphasis of not just the district, but the whole concept that the district exists to support our schools, and we're going to try to improve how we do that. And so that's our primary philosophy behind all this because we believe that will in turn change the world. So thank you, guys. You guys are doing amazing. I'm really excited about this team as well. So thank you for putting this together.
Any questions or comments from board members? We've got a little bit of time. Go ahead, Kim.
I just had a real quick comment, hopefully, just about the guiding coalitions. I'm curious how we got the numbers for each one. Notice the high school, we have eight principals participating. Elementary, only four though, and when we have 54 schools, it feels almost maybe not as representative as it could be. I'm just curious why we have four there and not more? Is it just trying to balance total number of people, or what is that?
It is balancing. If you notice on SALT, we took into consideration what you've said and said there are four from elementary and only one from high school. If you also notice in that slide, sorry. Elementary schools do have some additional supports from slids and from district directors where high schools, it's just the high school principals. There's only eight of them. And I haven't had all the conversations with them, but I've begun to have them, and as I've asked, what's the membership of this guiding coalition? It's like the eight of us. They're the ultimate leader of their network and of our district, and we're trying to really empower their voice. That doesn't diminish the role of junior high principals or elementary principals, but each level is a little unique.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Julie, did you have anything?
I just want to clarify with the parent advocate who you were talking about, Taylor. So if I'm a parent and I have a concern, I first go to the teacher, and if I don't get my resolve concerned, I go to the principal, and if I don't get my concern resolved there, I go to Mr. Cater. Is this correct? Just making sure people don't skip and go.
Correct. And that's kind of the first thing he's going to ask as well. Get a chance to talk to the teacher, get a chance to talk to the principal. And not so much to say, hey, don't bother me until you've done that. You know, he's very sincerely approachable, and you know, the next part of that conversation's going to be, you haven't, well, let's see if I can help facilitate. Let me help you get connected with them because the bottom line is that's, the goal of this is to be able to get a good solution for all parties at the lowest level possible, and he's quite skilled at being able to help facilitate that. Now, at the same time, sometimes someone who's a little nervous about a concern they've got just needs someone to walk them through, who do I talk to first, and how do I get a hold of them, and how do I have this discussion? And that's what he's going to help facilitate.
And when I receive a question or concern, then I would, where I used to say, oh, you already talked to the principal, should we connect you with the slid? Now, no slid. I go to the parent advocate, right?
Yeah, and that would be a great referral to make because I know a lot come your direction. That'd be very appropriate. At the same time, I'm coaching my slid team to make sure that we're very receptive. The last thing we want to do is have anyone contact us and say, you're contacting the wrong person.
Yeah.
So we would do the same, and we would make sure that we're connecting people the right person. Taylor's going to be.
Really excited about this concept, and it's something we've never tried here, but we never fully embraced the Bush Institute coaching model that we have talked long about. Bill Kenley did an excellent job building our talent development pipeline with our principals, and we're trying to expand on that, but our slids have been so consumed with being able to address adequately customer service complaints and concerns. And they're not focused as much as we need them to be on actual school leadership and improvement. And so the intent here is to build some consistency in the responses to our parents and make sure they're getting taken care of at an appropriate level of service and response. But also primarily, this will free up our slids to be able to do the thing that they want to do the most, which is actually be with their principals in classroom spaces, making observations and providing supports to teachers.
Thanks.
Can I go back and address Kim's question a little bit more? We've done this for a year, we began doing it, and we're going to reassess, and if we need more voices, we'll include more voices.
Personally, sorry, I was going to say, I love that we have principals on there, but I also worry that we load a little bit too much on principals. So that's, I think that's a fine balance that you have to find, and I know I've talked to some principals, especially at the high school. I think high school principals have a ton on their plate, so kind of balancing that, I think, is part of that, too, is that, you know, taking a principal out of a building for a meeting is always, always difficult, so.
And on that note, is that committee going to like rotate who's on it from your tier so that it's not overburdening?
For sure.
My question is, so you said you have nine schools in the first cohort, but you could have had more. Do those schools know that they're considered for, you know what I mean? Because we have nine, but I mean, a few of them are my schools, so I'm just wondering how this works with deciding who needs the services first, second, you know? And how many were in that original? Is there nine more schools? Is there 20 more schools in that?
My spreadsheet's 10, sorry, 10 elementary schools, so about four more of the elementary schools. One of them was Valley Crest, which of course is in a different model at this point, Dos Mundo, so it's a whole different thing to consider. The short answer to your question is, I think a lot of what's going on with the slids are doing with their principals is helping them to understand all aspects of that state accountability system and those metrics that actually are putting them in that tier right now. And it's over a three-year average, so there's some unpacking to do. So do they know? Loosely, they do. Do they know specifically, hey, this is how close to that line we are right now if we were able to do more on this cohort? Probably not, and that'll come more in our coaching conversations in the upcoming next couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
I think, too, it's important to understand that the notion is that we're bringing up all boats in the harbor. The goal here is to not come in and micromanage these schools. It's to come in and provide a tremendous boost of supports and lift and build their capacity, and then we move on to other places and continue to boost the capacity of all of our schools. And hopefully, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, we're boosting the best of the boosting that can happen. If that makes any sense whatsoever.
Add-on and reinforce what Superintendent Horssey said. I've been involved multiple times in whatever the label was, turnaround, school improvement, and often it feels like a label and a sanction and hoops to jump through that aren't helping. And I was so thrilled watching as they brought the elementary schools together first, because elementary's a little more specific of what they're tackling, junior high and high school, had those groups during the summertime, coming together with their leadership teams, and the vibe from those groups was so positive. They're feeding off of each other. Things like having that added admin support went a long way, or the instructional coaches there. So far, from my perspective, comparing it to where I've been, this is feeling literally like a boost. It's feeling like, this is awesome. It's in-house, and we're saying, we can see there's a need for some added support here. Let's provide it.
I appreciate that. I'm hopeful this is what our schools need, so thank you.
Board president, is there time for another question?
Sure. Brooke. The two questions I have, actually, one is understanding that our teachers are overloaded, but they're also the ones to integrate and implement, you know, how do you see them being involved in this? And then the second question, maybe I'm going to need to talk about more offline, but that's, I'd like to understand the financial implications of this plan, and you know, there's a discussion about, you know, really pushing resources into these schools. Where are they coming from? So I'd like to have that discussion at some point, which I think is longer than we have here to do, but.
I will say, we have prioritized them, we've created some resources with this tax increase to provide coaching. These schools are getting the first brand-new coaches. They're all going to get coaches. We provided additional resources around administration, and we said, in the boost schools, they don't just get a half, they're going to get a full. And that's kind of built into our district budget. Additionally, we've sought for and got some additional resources from outside of the Granite School District, and we're using that to employ in the professional development and the opportunities for teachers to plan and prepare because they are overwhelmed. And we're providing a mechanism whereby they don't necessarily have to feel that overwhelmed because they've got this additional help and compensation for it.
Well, and along those same lines, additionally, we were speaking in ELT this morning, maybe we assign an ELT member to each of the boost schools so that not only are you doing your regular job, but you also can shine the light, you know what I'm saying? Do an extra visit out to these schools because you're assigned to it. And we've talked that same thing about district directors, pairing them with a slid, so that you have a slid and a district director going side by side into the school. So that's how we're maximizing our resources, not that we're assigning them directly to the school, that they go out about their regular duties, but then they also have an emphasis at the school. And when they have extra time, that's where they're headed, is the school.
I remember being out at a school, I don't even remember which school, and there was a brand-new kindergarten teacher there doing the best she could, but she had a struggling kindergarten class. And we were able in that very moment to contact the instruction and curriculum department, I didn't say that very intentionally, and get the genmalet to come out and actually do some work with that teacher and to kind of do a classroom reset. So I want to think of SALT and this real-time services and support of, it's not ignoring our other schools, it's simply going, okay, there's a real need here in this particular boost location, let's get some math resources out there to help these teachers with their lesson plans. Let's build in that real-time action and support. And I hope all of our schools feel like they can get that type of support through their slid. The slid's now there in the room actively engaging and promoting the needs of those respective boost schools, if that makes sense.
I think, too, that I kind of got the impression of like, okay, here are the people who are going to put together all these ideas and this plan, but really, here are the people who are going to support the implementers. This really boost thing is about boosting the instruction for our teachers. It's actually more about them and then the structure around how to make them the focus and the center. So I understand why they would not be on the support team because they are the support head, right?
I just want to say thanks for making the district people that are here on the same team. You know, for how long has it been that we haven't been narrowly focused or something? So thank you for using everybody. That's cool.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate this presentation and understanding.
Just one last piece to this as they're exiting. We do every other month a construction report, so we're going to be building in kind of a, you'll get the same updates and reports on our strategic plan every other month from Mitch and his team with respect to updates and real-time activities that are occurring to boost those schools and provide support. So the idea is that we're more accountable through transparency of those efforts as well.
Okay, we're going to move on. It was my understanding that we had four people that we were waiting for. I've only seen two here. Am I, are we still waiting for two more? Okay, then let's do really fast because we're going to wait for them and see if they come. Our just our board reports, because I think they're going to be short, if I'm not mistaken. So Julie, go ahead.
I don't think I have anything to report from my committees.
I do. We did meet last month, the Salt Lake County Parks and Rec Advisor Committee. So just a quick update, the committee's pretty heavily focused on the My County Rec Pass right now. They talked about investigating a point-of-sale system that tracks or ties the pass to the activities that are being used. I provide the feedback you shared, Nicole. Apparently, Salt Lake District already does bus passes, but it's not like with the county, so it's separate. Just a lot of discussion around that, different things that are already happening in other places, and so now they want to do a subcommittee that's specifically going to focus on that, on how to enhance that pass, and I will be on that. So it's, we'll be meeting monthly until we get through that process, so that's my update.
Thanks, Kim. Connie?
I don't have anything from my committees, but I do, I did forget to mention that Cypress High and Hunter High has a summer graduation tomorrow, both of those schools, and I believe there's four at one school and eight at the other, I want to say, so I have 12 more graduates from my area, so I'm really proud of them.
I'll piggyback on that and say that Cottonwood is also having a graduation on Friday in that regard, and that's all I have.
I don't have anything to report from benefits committee because we have not met since our last meeting, but I will be joining Chris tomorrow at the Hunter High graduation.
We have not had any law and policy. I have asked Doug to follow up with principals as well as coaches and teachers who are affected by the travel policy because that's a anchor me focused, so looking forward to having a robust discussion about that the next time we meet. And Tville does have their graduation, too. We're having a lot of summer graduations, so we're thrilled with that. Superintendent, do you want to give us a quick report while we, I still don't see the two others? If not, we'll just go ahead and go after that.
Yes, and I will talk really slowly until people arrive. Just kidding. I just have a few items to report out on. I wanted to make mention of the opportunity I had to visit with the Mount Olympus Community Council last evening to update them. Within Mill Creek City, there's actually four city-run or sponsored or supported community councils, so they're called community councils, but they're not attached to our schools. But had a good opportunity to talk through the PAC study and provide them some updates, and Steve Hogan will be back.
And Steve Hogan will be back up there after we narrow the study and the scope of our study at next month's board meeting. So just as an update in terms of where PAC is at, they've had a long summer to analyze a number of options. We do have our community committee that is continuing to meet. There's two more meetings, I think, planned with that group. As a reminder, that's two parents and a teacher from each of the schools in the population analysis study area, as well as some of our city elected officials who are participating in that committee. So they'll meet two more times. And I believe PAC will meet at least one to two more times before a final narrowing of the scope of that study will happen in September. And I just want to give a huge shout out to this community and this committee. We've gotten some sound feedback and I think we're going to be able to put together some good options with that feedback for the board to take into consideration. I wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Anthony Mohammed. I thought that was an incredible event. I'm very excited about doing something mid-year as a follow-up with that group of administrators and teachers to kind of keep the momentum going. We do see a high correlation between strong PLCs and strong student outcomes. And we need to make sure that our schools, again, the district exists to support our schools, have the resources and the training necessary to be able to be successful in their PLCs. And hopefully there's an understanding and expectation that Granite is, that's just going to be part of our culture, is that we're a district that collaborates and that we work together. And so grateful for all those who came and participated in that.
Ben, will you explain who he is? I don't think many of my listeners here know who he is.
Sure. Dr. Anthony Mohammed is from, thank you, Solution Tree, which is a preeminent professional development organization surrounding a culture of PLCs. He's written many books, about half of them are sitting on my desk right now, but.
And PLC stands for?
PLC is a professional learning community, but it's essentially the way that our teachers work together and collaborate in usually grade level or subject area teams. And they review data. There are certain questions they're supposed to be asking themselves on a respective basis. They talk about assessments and a variety of other topics that are intended to help drive student outcomes. So we want our teachers to be able to collaborate and to have strong PLCs with support of their administration and of course, the district. So thank you for reminding me to clarify. So if you want to Google Anthony Mohammed, then you'll know who my educational crush is. I didn't know what that was until I got to hear him speak. So he's amazing and loves some of his content there. So we also have a number of summer graduations. It was brought up, I think there's two tomorrow, Hunter High School and Cypress. And we will have representation from the district and hopefully the board to be able to support those graduation ceremonies. I wanted to give a shout out to the Cypress community. Their first football game will be had this Friday. It's the blue and gold game and we're going to do a mini ribbon cutting on the field. I unfortunately will not be able to be there, but encourage, we're going to have some local community leaders and our student body helping us with that ribbon cutting. And it should be a fun event and invite the entire community to come out and support the game. We will have a more formal grand opening and open house a little bit later on in September once we've gotten through our punch list on the remaining items. Give our teachers a chance to get moved in and school started. Last but not least, I wanted to make mention of our administrative kickoff last week and just share what my message was to our administrators. And I shared an example of in my teaching and instruction, I worked with two different coaches, instructional coaches, Marissa at Skyline and Summer at Granger High School. And each of those environments was a little bit unique and different and required me to adapt my teaching style and approach to the needs of my kids. And I was very grateful to have a coaching cycle with each of those respective coaches. And I like to think that it made a difference in improved my instruction and support of those kids and their learning. But the point of sharing that message was that I continue to be coached in my role. I encourage other people to coach me in my new responsibilities. I still call Dr. Nye probably at least two or three times a month just to see if he's sitting by a pool or golfing or something because I know he's got a cushy new job. But that being said, we want to emphasize that everybody in Granite School District is amazing, but we can all be better and we can all improve. And so if I can model that, that's my goal and intention is to continue to be coached. And I appreciate even the people who emailed me today with some suggestions and help and support. So that's the model and the hope and the message of this year is that, and I appreciate this team for putting together an incredible administrative kickoff. I felt we were very focused on that message and again, tying that back to student outcomes and how we can make a difference for kids.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, we are going to now jump to our recognitions. So we're going to invite Dr. Noel Converse to come on up and present the recognitions.
Thank you very much, Board President and Board and everyone here tonight. We want to give heartfelt congratulations to 2024-2025 Granite School District National History Day National Qualifiers. These students have excelled in the National History Day competition. And so let me tell you a little bit about what that means. It's a rigorous academic competition where students conduct in-depth historical research on a theme and are then judged on historical quality. I think that makes up about 80% of what they're judged on, but also the clarity of the presentation. So there's quite a bit of research, there's bibliography, there's lots of things that go into making this a very, very academic process. So these are our students who have become national qualifiers. Now, this is really important because they represent the top students in our state. And just to put that in perspective, Granite School District alone had upwards of 100 participants who were working in this competition toward this achievement. Of those 100 students, we had 13 individual or group projects receiving the national qualifier honor. We do have some things in the works at the state level because our district, with the support of the parents here and the students' interest and our teacher's support, really are one of the very top districts in the state participating in the national history competition. So we've got some things in the works about some upcoming new opportunities just for Granite School District. So what I would like to do is bring each one of the students up. And when you come up, I think we're going to do a picture, right? And you'll shake each one of the board members' hands and then there'll be a group picture at the end, correct? Okay, so we're going to start with Grace Winder of Granger High School. So come on up, Grace. And then next we have Daniella Armstrong of Granger High School. And I think this is the relation Darby Armstrong of Granger High School. We also have Wesley Candelara of Skyline High School. And finally, we have Jonathan Nielsen of Eisenhower Junior High School. So come on up, Jonathan. Again, this is a very academically rigorous honor and we are just very proud of our GSD students who represent us so well in the state. So thank you.
They guys have to stand closer so they can't see me in the back.
Yeah, if you two just scoot over that way, then we can still see the granite right there. And it's blocking the door.
Congratulations. We are super impressed and super proud of you. Thank you so much. And parents also stand and be recognized. We appreciate you supporting us.
Nicole, I have to say that Granger High and Skyline, those two high schools have really wrapped their arms around this National History Day. And their history teachers that are in those schools have really encouraged and taken it to a new level. So hopefully other high schools are listening and they can maybe have their interest peak to push their kiddos to get involved in this because it is quite rigorous, but it's also rewarding. I think they learn a lot through the process.
Thank you. All right, thank you for coming and being recognized. We do have need of an executive session, so if there's no other discussion or questions, we'll entertain a motion for the purpose of safety and security, sorry.
And we're in our executive session for the purpose of safety and security. Second?
All right, we have a mush in a second to move to executive session for the purpose of safety and security. All in favor, please say, actually, this is a roll call vote, sorry. Julie, please state your name and tell us.
Julie Jackson, yes.
Kim Chandler, yes.
Connie Burgess, yes.
Chris Nguyen, yes.
Karen Winder, yes.
Clark Nelson, yes.
And Nicole McDermott, yes. All right, you are welcome to stay here. We're actually going to go upstairs and do our executive session, so if you all want to hang out.